Well, a member of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City, and I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's Sioux City Council Candidates Election Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose membership is open to all citizens over the age of 16, male or female. We do not endorse candidates or the public on issues affecting our citizens and government. That is why we are committed to hosting candidates forums like this one. In addition to the League of Women Voters, this forum is being hosted by the Greater Sioux City Press Club and Sulan Public Media. We would like to thank the mayor, the city manager, city support staff, especially city clerk Lisa McGardle, for their assistance in making the excellent arrangements for tonight's forum. Cable One is televising this event with the help of city staff and intern Connor Foster. Thank you, Connor. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters Board for their assistance in coordinating tonight's event forum. We appreciate having members of the Mayor's Youth Commission Legislative Committee volunteering to serve as timers and greeters this evening. They are Kyra Hess, Luella Gaskin, and Amarilis Gonzalez from North High, and Carly Gasaway from West High, and Emma Lamson, Kylie Novak, Emily Payer, John Paul Keen, and Caitlin Yokum from Bishop Healan High School. Thank you all for being here tonight. Woo! Serving as our panelists tonight are Cindy O'Kane, co-president of the League of Women Voters, Woody Gutberg, president of the Greater Sioux City Press Club, and Mary Hartnett from KWIT Sulan Public Media. We appreciate them giving their time to be with us this evening. On behalf of the citizens of Sioux City, I want to thank our candidates for their willingness to run for public office. There are six candidates in this election. Three of them will be chosen to serve on the city council on Tuesday, November 7. At this time, I would like to introduce our candidates, starting down at the end there with Pete Gretkin. Next to him is Jake Jungers, Dan Moore, Alex Waters, Dennis Quinn, and Douglas Waples. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I will pose the initial -- yes, you can applaud. Good idea. I will pose the initial -- an initial question to the candidates relative to their qualifications, and will allow them a 60-second response time. The panelists will then pose their question. Each panelist will pose a question to just one candidate, and after the candidate answers, I will call upon the next panelist to pose a question to the next candidate. The candidates will have 60 seconds maximum response time allotted. You hear that, Mr. Gretkin? The timers will show a sign to the candidates. Hold that up so he can see it. Whoever's got the 30-second second sign? Yes. The 30 seconds remain, and when their time has expired, who's got the stop sign? There you go. And then we will proceed to the next candidate. We will start each round with a different candidate and proceed in order. That way, we don't have the same people asking questions of the same candidate every time. During the final 10 minutes of the panelist portion of the forum, we thought we'd mix it up a little tonight, gentlemen. So, instead of answering a question that someone else answered, we would like you to pose a question to one of your other candidates who is running. So, we'll start with Mr. Gretkin asking a question down here, and we'll go back and forth. So, think of -- be thinking about what questions you would like to ask each other. And then, after approximately 45 minutes, we will take a short break, collect the questions posed by our audience. Please, the audience is invited to please write your questions on the note cards that are being provided by the League of Women Voter Members, and then we will collect them. I will reconvene our forum and pose as many questions that have been submitted as I can until we run out of time. During the last 10 to 15-minute segment, gentlemen, you will be given an opportunity to summarize your reasons for running for office, and we'll give you 60 seconds for that summation. I would like to remind the audience, candidates, and panelists to turn off your cellphones and pagers. Thank you very much. And I will now pose our introductory question and ask each ---- seconds. Please state your qualifications for a seat on the Sioux City Council. Mr. Gretkin, would you please answer first?
Yes, thank you very much. I believe that I'm qualified to be a member of the city council for a number of reasons. First of all, I spent nearly 38 years with the city of Sioux City and understand the government process and the organization for your term. It's been a very good term. I've learned a great deal. I have time. I have experience. I have a passion for the city, and I've always had this theory that it's best to be around good people because good things happen to good people. And I know that the group that I've been with and the city as a whole is a great organization, and for that reason, that's why I continue to want to be involved. But I think to the most important part is my experience in time in city government and my willingness to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jungers.
Sure. First, before I get started, I want to wish my mother a happy birthday. I say it as a birthday tonight, so she's watching at home. And thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us. I'm 28 years old. I'm the youngest up here. I've been a member of Mayor's Youth Commission, a member of the Effective Fiscal and Public Policy Committee. I've been involved on -- with Democrat Party and with Republican Party for candidates that I personally believe in. I think that I would represent people to the best of my abilities, and I would look forward to earning the opportunity to serve on city council.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
I too want to thank the League of Women Voters for this evening. My qualifications would include, I've practiced law for 40 years, and I've used that to the best of my ability while sitting on the city council. I've been on Planning and Zoning Commission for a little over 25 years, and that gave me a great deal of experience. Just as importantly is the fact that I do listen to people, and I try to help in any way I can. I like to have open dialogue and open discussion. I'm very transparent and very candid. I don't read between the lines very well, so all of you have helped me understand what the issues are, and I've appreciated that. I think we've made a lot of progress these past four years, and I think we'll make a lot more progress as we go forward. And I would ask for your vote on November 7. Thank you.
Mr. Waters.
Yes, without sounding like a broken record, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Mayor's Youth Commission for being here tonight and putting this on. As far as what qualifies me or why I'll -- I believe that I'm best suited for this office. I guess, first and foremost, I think my background and my master's in negotiation and dispute resolution set me up to really be a listener, because I think that that's something that I've learned is really important in this position, is not thinking you come to the table with the best ideas, but really opening it up to the best and brightest, trusting your staff and the people that are -- really have the opportunity to give you their perspective, listening to that, and then ultimately making what you think is the best decision for the future of the city. The second thing that I think that really qualifies me is my integration into the community. I've really tried my best to serve on different boards and commissions, truly listen to the people and hear what they have to say and what their perspectives are so that I can best serve the people from up here, and that's what I hope to continue to do.
Okay, Mr. Quinn.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank everybody for being here tonight. I retired from the Sioux City Community School District three years ago as a transportation supervisor, where I supervised 90 to 95 drivers and assistants every day. I set up routing, so -- and I was a police officer for nine years in Colorado, so I've worked with the public for quite a few years. I'm a good problem solver. I have a lot of common sense, and I'd love to get on the council and work for all the people.
Thank you. Mr. Waples.
Thank you. I've been a resident of Sioux City for 45 years. The last four years, I've attended or watched on TV a majority, probably 95% of all the city council meetings. I've -- I'm a veteran. I feel my experience. I've got, oh, just right at 35 years in management. I figure that helps qualify me with working with people and doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our panelists' questions, and we will start with Mrs. O'Kane, followed by Mr. Gutberg and Ms. Hartnett. Mrs. O'Kane, would you please direct your question to Mr. Jungers, and then we will continue in order.
Okay, this is on the use of consultants. The city has been known to hire consultants, for example, and engineering city employees.
I would say we should use outside consultants if we can't find anybody in-house first. If the city can't attract the jobs to -- for these consultants to be here, we need to find programs, and I think we've talked about it the last one, we need to find programs to bring these people here. So, I know a lot of businesses and a lot of people are upset when you spend $40,000 to $100,000 on a survey, and we don't do anything about it, and I think that's a valid frustration. So, I would start there. If we can't find anybody in-house, then let's look elsewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Gutberg.
All right, for Mr. Moore?
For Mr. Moore, yes.
All right, thanks. Some of the questions I have tonight have been submitted by listeners from KSCJ. One of them that a few people submitted, last week, the council voted to switch from city-running events facilities to the Philadelphia-based term Spectra. A few people have brought up to me wondering the timing of it. An extra week was granted before the decision was made, and that put that after the council primaries. So, some of the people that submitted questions to me were wondering, was that done deliberately to make the decision after the primary, or was it just coincidence the way that worked out?
Thank you for your question, Woody. I would say this, that was a very difficult decision for me. There were a lot of facts to take into consideration, the E Fab recommendations that were given to us, along with the Orpheum Theater Group recommendations and the city managers committee that they had formed. And I wanted to study it and review it, and I worked all weekend to try to figure out the pros and cons of city versus Spectra. And at our meeting on Monday, I sensed that I just didn't think we had heard from the public. I thought -- I didn't think we could make, at least this council member couldn't make an informed decision based on what I had. So, I had asked for the deferral. Quite frankly, that thought never crossed my mind to deliberately delay it for a week because of the primary. I wanted to get all of the facts that I could possibly get, and as it turned out, we had a very difficult week, a very good week in the sense of getting that information so we could all make an informed decision, and I appreciated council deferring it for one week.
All right, thanks.
And Ms. Hartnett, if you would direct your question to Mr. Waters.
What are some things you think we could do to better market Sioux City, better, you know, sell Sioux City in general to outside businesses, people that want to move here?
Yeah, that's something that I think about a lot. I think that a coordinated effort is really key. One of the things, I was talking with the editorial board about it today, was the determination whether we should really keep tourism and like a CBB under city discretion, or whether Spectra or they would take that, you know, at the Tyson Event Center, yeah, should they be granted the contract. Or I think you could take it a different route and really look at it as a nonprofit entity, maybe something similar to the Sulan Chamber of Commerce. I think we have so much potential and incredible amenities all throughout the region, and we need to start marketing it as such. We're not in silos. It's not Sioux City versus South Sioux versus North Sioux and the Dunes. All those areas, I think if we coordinate and market it together, we're so much stronger and really attractive to people that want to relocate here, or just marketing it to the people that are here and showcasing what we have and what they can take advantage of. I think that that coordinated effort going forward is going to be key.
Thank you. And if you would direct your next question to Mr. Quinn.
This is on immigration. Immigration has received a lot of attention at the national level, and my question is, in Sioux City with an ever-increasing population of minorities, how do you think Sioux City should respond? How is the city, should we react to the immigration issue?
Well, immigration, it's good for the city. Their immigration laws are on the books. I don't know what I would do, you know, to enhance immigration. The laws are there, and if they just enforce the laws that are already on the books, then I think it'd be all right. But we have a pretty diverse population here in Sioux City, and I think it works out well.
Thank you. Mr. Gutberg, if you will direct your question to Mr. Waples.
Thanks. At the beginning of the new council year, the city do you have that would qualify you for dealing with a budget of a couple hundred million dollars?
You know, I don't know of anybody that's in their first year that has probably dealt with a couple hundred million dollar budgets. I've dealt with budgets at a lower dollar amount, and I think it's a learning process for everybody, and I'm sure any newly elected member goes through the same thing. I'm sure the first year is going to be tougher than the next two, three, and four.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Hartnett, if you will direct your question to Mr. Gretkin.
How do we increase the speed of, you know, getting these infrastructure projects done, whether, you know, it's potholes in the street or a sinkhole, major issues people have in their neighborhoods on the street? Seems like those are things I hear a lot about.
I agree. I think infrastructure improvements are -- it's necessary for the city to really take them, those issues, seriously. I sit on a team currently, it's called Public Works Team. Part of council involvement is council members participating with the various departments within city government, and we talk a lot about all of the projects, and there are a large number of projects ongoing all of the time. It gets a little confusing. I think the best way, what I would like to do is to involve the public more in. I don't know, Mary, that we'll ever be able to get ahead of the game. Number one, it's very expensive to do infrastructure projects, but I would like to see a master plan put out that would identify all of the projects for the city, and then I would like that to be prioritized, and then I would like to have the general public weigh in on what is important to them. And I think maybe that will at least give us a comfort level with what the work is going to do.
And if you will direct your question to Mr. Moore, please.
Okay, this is on the state budget, our budget. With the current budget crunch, some state legislators have proposed reneging on a promise that could impact Sioux City's budget. That refers to the 2013 legislative provision that said if, you know, we had a shortfall, the state of Iowa would reimburse local governments so that local governments will not be faced with cutting essential services or raising property taxes. If the legislators do break this promise, the city would lose substantial revenue. So, as a member of the city council, how would you handle the shortfall?
You know, and that backfill that they had promised us is extremely important to our community and to our budget, no question about it. And I think what we need to do is push back. You know, and this council is not -- isn't bashful about doing that. That's what we did earlier this year with the collective bargaining, when the state was stripping everything out of that. We passed a resolution to support that it was going to be business as usual as far as we were concerned as a city council. I think it's a very -- it's very critical that we fight for that and make sure that the promises are fulfilled. And how that, what's that going to look like, I can't say at this point, but it's something that they must. It was promised, as you said, and we have to live up to our promises, and we want the state to live up to their promises as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gutberg, if you would direct your question to Mr. Waters.
CIP, the capital improvements budget, is also part of that initial process coming up in January. Any thoughts that you have on the five-year plan? CIP is usually about a five-year proposal. What do you have for a long-term goal for Sioux City?
That is a good question, and I look forward to hopefully being a part of the budgeting process. I think that that's a big undertaking and a conversation that I hope I'm a part of. I think that what's really important for me is that long-term vision. It's something that I've talked about repeatedly, thinking more long-term rather than in the here and now, kind of what's affecting us, but where we want to be as a community. I think especially when we think of our facilities, it's something that this council has talked about before. But for me, making sure that we're taking care of our facilities, I look at Tyson Event Center as an example. I think that when it was first built, it was an incredible facility, and then we didn't have the necessary plan to maintain it and make sure that it was still on the cutting edge, and now we're dealing with that. And I think that when we look at the five-year plan and even take that into account and say, where are these facilities going to be, what is our vision of what we want to look like as a community, and we need to budget as such.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Hartnett, if you will direct your question to Mr. Quinn.
It seems like in the last month or a couple of months, several businesses downtown have, you know, shut down Little Chicago or, you know, Capelli, those businesses right down Fourth Street. Why do you think it's so hard to have these businesses to keep going? I know Little Chicago had been here a long time. Do you think it's something to do with downtown itself, getting people downtown? What do you think would help that? Help those businesses?
Well, I think when you had, like, the tariff, when they all left and everything, you lost a lot of foot traffic downtown. There's just, I just don't think there's enough population downtown to keep these businesses going. And I know after Little Chicago Deli closed, a couple days later, there was a deal in the paper that they're building some apartments around downtown. But I think until you get more population downtown to sustain these businesses like that, it's just going to be tough.
Thank you. Okay, this has to do with the sale of alcohol and tobacco to underage people. There is a perception that some businesses have been issued multiple warnings by the police for underage sales of tobacco and alcohol, and they have not faced any further penalties. How would you address this?
My opinion is that the first time they're penalized should be way higher, and after maybe three times, five times, or whatever, I think they lose their license for a year or longer, and I think you'd curb the problem real quick.
Thank you. Mr. Gutberg, if you will direct your question to Mr. Gretkin.
I'll kind of follow up with this, Pete, on Mary's question regarding the infrastructure. A lot of residents have also called in and complained about the fact Glen Avenue, the two major projects the last couple of years, it's taken, it seems like, forever to get it done. There's been a couple of weeks where no one seems to be working on it. Same thing with the pothole up on Nebraska or Pierce Street up near St. Luke's. Should we be holding contractors' feet to the fire as far as penalties when these projects get extended beyond what would be a reasonable deadline or what the expected deadline is for them?
That's a good question. It's talked about a lot, Woody, and yes, we should be holding the contractors to the contract. The Public Works Director, Dave Carney, Monday night at council meeting, shared with us that he thought, a couple of the projects, when that same question you just asked me came up by another council member, what are we doing? He said, "I think what happened is we just gave them too many days." Now, I don't know the formula for deciding the number of days, but people need to be a little understanding, inasmuch as dependent upon the weather, the number of -- it's a number of working days. It's not a calendar day arrangement, and if it's bad weather, that day doesn't count against them. I think we should be accounting, holding them accountable again, and maybe we should be watching more carefully the number of contracts they have. I think a lot of contractors have multiple contracts, and I suspect a lot of people here have had the same issue. You get a contractor, and you don't see him for a day, and it's a little bit here and there, so I think we need to be a little more strict with that. Thank you.
Ms. Hartnett, if you'll direct your question to Mr. Jungers.
You have said that putting a new hotel downtown, that decision, maybe wasn't the decision you would make in that situation. What would you have done if you would have been on the council at that time?
When looking at the hotel downtown, obviously, I know these guys talked with Howard Johnson. You know, if we could get somebody to invest as a current business into building that hotel, and there's grants, I believe there's a $6 million grant, and there's, you're putting 20-plus million, and, you know, I heard that the rooms would be very expensive. But with the hotel, I think it was more of the education of people, is what I have heard. The project overall, I'm a fan of, but the hotel part, when you have one downtown that's existing, that's where the frustration's at, and I think the location, and obviously with the parking deck and everything like that, but I would definitely try to work with existing businesses first before.
And if you will direct your question to Mr. Waters. Mr. Waters, okay. If elected or re-elected to the city council, you will have four more years to serve. What do you want to see happen in those four years? What do you hope to accomplish? What are your priorities?
That is a big question for one minute, but I'm going to try. So, as far as the priorities and things that I want to focus on, for me, it's really capitalizing on the momentum that we have right now. I think in two years, you're going to see incredible change in Sioux City, and I'm really excited about it. I mean, I think you look at everything from I-29 to Highway 20, I mean, that's just infrastructure. You think about the quality of life amenities, Cone Park, the riverfront, you think of the trail connections, all of those things are happening, and I think we need, if I am serving another term, if I'm serving a term that's awesome, if nothing else, I think as a council and as a city, we need to continue that momentum and really working towards that, because I think it's essential to attracting and retaining more young professionals, which helps us with economic development, with workforce problems. I mean, I think that it's all interconnected, and it gets back to that question about marketing our city, right? Like, and continuing that momentum, and so I really hope that over the next four years, we can continue that. That's what I'm looking forward to.
Thank you. Mr. Gutberg, if you'll direct your question to Mr. Quinn.
Sure, thanks. If you're elected, what's the one thing you want to change from day one going forward after the budget process and everything? Is there an issue that, "I'm running because of this, I want to see this," changed?
I don't have one issue, but if I could change anything, I would like to see the city's spending change. I don't think the city needs to be in the real estate business, and I don't think we need to be investing in some of the things that we're investing in. I think this money should be spent on you and you and you, and that's where our tax dollars should go, because that's what they're for, and I think we need to get out of the real estate business.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hartnett, if you will direct your question to Mr. Waples.
You have said that, you know, voting, a vote for Doug Waples is a vote for, you know, the citizens of Sioux City and not for City Hall. Could you expand on that a little bit, on, you know, what your opinion is on that?
I think a lot of times, the votes structured, it appears to be by the way the people in city halls present it to the council. And there's a lot of things that have happened in, you know, over the last couple of years that I would not have voted for. The hotel's one of them. I don't think the hotel should be put in the parking lot and block the back of that convention center. I don't like the way the ramp is there. If they want to put it somewhere, I say tear the Riviera down and put it over there and use the ramp that's right beside it, and I'm sure you could do that for way less than the $2.8 million it's going to cost to put the ramp in.
Hey, thank you. And Ms. O'Kane, we're now up two. I've got to figure out where I stopped. Mr. Quinn?
Or it's Pete, I think.
Oh, I missed the other end.
I'd like to remain quiet, but...
I am sorry. I knew I was forgetting something. Okay, yes. Yes. In a recent article in the Sioux City Journal, the tax...
In particular, in city government, for the city council, that we try to make sure that we're spending the money wisely, that it is for the betterment of the entire community, not just a small segment. When expenses outweigh the revenue, then we're in trouble, so we're going to have to make tough decisions and do the best that we can.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, if you will direct your question to Mr. Jungers.
Sure. Last year, the state of Iowa didn't really give the cities much time to prepare and adopt fireworks ordinances. Our first try at it this past July 4th, some people were happy, some people were unhappy. How do you feel about changing what we've had? More restrictive, leave it the same, loosen it up a bit? What do you think about the fireworks regulations here?
Uh, with, with fireworks regulations, I proposed actually this summer after, to narrow it down, I think July 1st through the 4th for shooting them off is good enough. I don't think, you know, you, you mix what the complaints are and you mix the, the benefit. But if you have a month period or however long it is for people to buy them, you also have to give them time to shoot them off. You don't want homes full of fireworks. And, you know, I know there was somebody with fireworks in a fireplace, and it was an incident like that. But I would definitely short, shorten the time period, the first through the fourth. Maybe shorten the time period that people can shoot them off, maybe not as earlier in the day, and maybe go till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. That's what I would do.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hartnett, to Mr. Moore, please.
I was reading a, a recent interview you did with the Sioux City Journal, and you were talking about the importance of small business and small businesses in Sioux City and the need to support them. And I was just sort of wondering what you think the city should do or continue to do or do differently to, to make sure that you're reaching out to small business.
Sure, thank you for that question. I think we've come a long way in the past four years to make, uh, doing business with City Hall easier. We're open for business, and I think we should continue. We can, we can do better than what we have been doing to make sure the small businesses, uh, their issues are addressed, uh, and, and they're timely addressed and that we help them either grow or succeed where they are. Uh, that's up to them, whether they want to expand and, and grow. Um, I don't ever want to lose sight of the fact that when we bring in large industries, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it's the smaller businesses that over the decades have made Sioux City what it is today. Um, this is a great community, and it's a great community because of the small businesses that stuck with Sioux City through thick and thin, uh, as well as the great volunteers that we have, um, to make, to make Sioux City what it is today. So I want to be mindful of that, and going forward, I want to try to still make it easier to do business, get permits, and get permission to do the expansions they may want to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to Mr. Quinn.
We're going to Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'd just like your, your position on privatizing city services. Do you think, and some, some of the pros and cons? What are your pros and cons? Should we privatize services? Should we not?
No, I think we should just use the, the people that we have to do the jobs that we need, need to get done around town. Uh, we've got a lot of people employed by the city, and, uh, we should utilize the people that we have before we ever go outside. The only time I think you should go outside is if you have, have someone in, have a job in town that can't be done by the locals, then, then you go outside. Other than that, I think we should utilize the employees of the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Gottberg, your question to Mr. Waples, please.
Alright, kind, kind of a different type of budgeting question. Um, as, as we go into the process, all the departments individually have to submit a budget to the council. Everybody wants to keep property taxes where they are and hopefully cut them a little bit if that's at all possible. Have you thought about where, if any departments, you could make cuts or would want to make cuts in city government to, to help keep taxes stable?
You know, I, I guess, I really can't answer that without seeing the numbers in front of me from, from what was spent last year and previous year to be able to compare, you know, with, uh, you know, if somebody's asking that they need two more people or, or whatever. Like I said, I, I think without looking at the exact, we're short in engineer right now, say as, because Glenn's gone, Glenn Ellis, and I don't think they've replaced him yet. So I'm sure that department, you know, uh, is down people. So, I mean, I, I think you gotta look at it over the last few years.
Alright, fair enough.
Thank you. And Ms. Hartnett, to Mr. Greckin.
Um, we have a lot of people moving in, though, that are sort of low to, you know, lower-middle income. Is there anything we can do in terms of grants or special programs to get more sort of lower-to-middle-income housing, affordable housing for people?
Well, it's a great question. Every time I hear market rate, uh, prices or market rate apartments or new, uh, affordable townhomes, it all seems to be, if it's apartments, it's a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a month, if it's affordable. If it's townhomes you're buying, you're spending a quarter of a million dollars. It doesn't seem affordable to me for the most part. But then I was a city employee my whole life, so. Um, it, um, I don't know, it's a great question, and I wish that there were something that I could point directly to. Uh, I think city staff does a great job of looking for grants on a continual basis. And, and there are programs available to subsidize, uh, lower-income households to, to help them with housing. Uh, I do think that the prices are getting to the point where a lot of people can't afford them, and, and hopefully we'll come up with something that will work in the long run.
Thank you. And if you would direct your question to Mr. Jungers.
Okay. Um, when new businesses come to town, um, it appears that they're given tax breaks and incentives, and how can that be made? That is the perception. So how can that be, taxes be levied more fairly between existing home and business owners and the new businesses coming in?
I th, I mean, I think you should, you should split it. Um, you know, you should be, and maybe different approach, but maybe one year, focus on business. If you're down on business, focus on getting businesses here. And if you're down and you need help with housing and with the neighborhoods, then, then we can focus on that. But the, the perception of tax incentives for businesses as a bad thing, you know, you're, you're also kind of paying to play on that. So I would, I would definitely, um, you know, when you bring in a big business and, say if you have an existing business in Sioux City, you bring somebody in, um, look at, look at what's going to thrive around this town. If you could partner with somebody that's already here and they want to grow, it's gonna help housing out as well. So I, I think if you just focus where, where you need to be.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr., we're up to Mr. Moore.
I'm losing my place tonight.
Well, while, while some city services are being privatized, like the events facilities, emergency ambulance service is actually coming to the city from, from basically private service. Are you comfortable with, with the short notice and the process on the city taking over the emergency ambulance service? And is the funding going to be there in this upcoming budget year that we can adequately staff and, and fund 911 service with, with our city fire rescue department?
Well, to answer your question, with all due respect, no, the notice was very short. Um, and it really, uh, put the city in a position to make some decisions a little bit quicker than what we might have. Uh, but having said that, uh, ambulance service is extremely important to our citizens. There's no question that we must have ambulance service, it must be of a quality that will serve the people and, and be there when we need it. We have to make sure we have adequate, uh, ambulance service coverage. So we're doing the best we can to put that into operation. Will it be, will it be profitable? I doubt it. Will we operate at a loss? Probably. But I think it's a service that we will provide. We'll try to grow it, we'll try to get better at it. And, um, and we're still working on, on those concepts. We have to be ready to go and up and running by January 1. And, uh, you know, that's part of the leadership role we need to...
And Ms. Hartnett, to Mr. Waters.
You know, it's been about a year since we switched the recycling, the glass recycling to this sort of, where you bring your bottles to the, the site. How do you think that's working? Also, the general recycling program of the city, do you think it's adequate? Do you think it could be better? Do you think people are using it?
I guess the reason that I, that I have mixed feelings is because I think you're putting an undue burden on the person to have to bring it to the location. Like, that's not, not something that I would have wanted, but I understand that you have to do what's cost-effective, right? Like, I understand why the council had to make that decision. I wish I didn't have to bring my glass there, but what I'm told by environmental services, by our staff, is the tonnage that they are collecting is incredible. So what's great is that people are using it. And that's what I really appreciate. I'm, I'm happy that that's continuing to be used. Now, as far as if we're doing enough, no. I, I want us to do more. Recycling is a huge initiative that I'm pushing, and I think when you drive around downtown or you go to our parks and everywhere like that, why do we not have a recycling bin right next to the trash can? They have them in other communities. People are throwing their plastic bottles and things like that in these trashcans, and it's clogging it up. When we have recycling services, we need to do better as a city and be a leader, saying no, all of our facilities, all of our parks, all of those areas have recycling bins. We need to do more.
Thank you. And this is going to be, we're gonna do one round, get, grab everybody else, one more question for each of you. So you're going to start with, uh, Mr. Waples here.
Okay, um, this has to do with minorities. Um, the minority population in the city has grown. I think in the last census, the Hispanic population alone went from seven to 15%. Don't quote me, but roughly. Um, so we've had a, an increase in the number of minorities in our community, but we have not seen an increase in the number of minority employees. What would you do to change that?
Um, I guess I don't know. My, at, at my son's business, he employs, uh, two minorities. Uh, the, uh, young man started working there a couple of years ago, and then he just, uh, brought his folks up from Mexico City, and his dad started working there. Uh, they're both very good workers. Um, I think it's like anything, if, if, if they get here and they need to, need to be trained, you know, they're gonna need to take a relationship in to, to get some schooling and, and maybe, uh, learn, you know, a little bit, enough of the language to be able to get through the, you know, the driver's license and stuff like that.
Thank you. And Mr. Gottberg, back to Mr. Greckin.
Have you tried the reverse angle parking yet, Pete? And are you in favor of it?
I have not tried the reverse angle parking, but I will tell you, Woody, that I, I always back into the driveway. Uh, I have three daughters, when I was teaching them to drive, we'd always learn to back in and pull out because we live on a corner, and I was always worried about the cars, uh, coming around the corner a little too fast. So I'm, I, I think every action, having said that, every action I've ever had, I think, was, I was backing up. So it's a difficult challenge. Uh, the thing I like about the reverse, uh, parking, well, it, it'll add parking spaces. But the thing that is more important to me is, uh, it really isn't any different than parallel parking, and it may be even easier than parallel parking. I suspect parallel parking is, is a little bit harder, but if you pull up and back in, uh, you'll be able to see the lines and just basically go back. If you're using your mirrors, I tell my girls that all the time, use the mirrors. And, uh, you'll find it easy to back in. Uh, it is, it does increase parking spaces. Uh, you get a little worried that you're gonna interfere with traffic, but I, I think we can get used to it.
Thank you. And Ms. Hartnett, to Mr. Jungers.
What would you like to have done with the old Argosy Gaming site? I know you, you have some opinions on this.
Um, with the old Argosy Gaming site, just the other day at the journal, I was talking about it. But, um, you know, the Anderson Dance Pavilion's a really, really great, um, location. If we can expand that and maybe work with, um, the art center and expand art along the riverfront, um, I know somebody's mentioned that idea to me. But walkways, parks, um, I wouldn't be opposed to shops. Um, Pete often talks about ice cream shops, let's get him that ice cream shop down there. But let's, let's get, let's get him, uh, let's get reasons for people to go down there. Um, I, I would like us to develop it, but also with safety in mind as well.
Right. Thank you. And to Mr. Moore.
The city has used tax, this is on TIF, they've used tax increment financing to encourage development. Could you explain how you feel, or how you believe TIF should be used in future development? Should we continue it? Should we let them...
Financing, I think, is a very important economic development tool that we've used over the years, and it serves Sioux City well. I think the problems we have to watch for, and, and Sioux City's been very good about this, is not to abuse the TIF, uh, concept. That's been a problem in eastern Iowa that has caused the legislators to consider some laws that would either do away with TIF or would modify it somewhat. It, it has served us really well in our community to, uh, to bolster economic development. I think we should continue to use that as an economic development tool. I think there should be a sunset on TIF where it would expire after 10 or 15 years. But the concept is just really a, it's a good concept, and, and I think we should continue to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you direct your question to Mr. Waters?
Sure. It's kind of, it's kind of an age-old question for Sioux City. Um, how do we, how do we ramp up and expand our workforce? I'm hearing even Seaboard Triumph hasn't, he hasn't been able to hire as many as they'd like to get fully going with, with just their first ship. So what aren't we doing? How, how do we get more people to come here to want to take the jobs that are available?
Another complicated question, Woody, but I'll, I'll try to tackle it. I'll try to tackle it in 60 seconds. Here we go. So, um, I think, getting back to a few things that we've talked about, right? Number one is marketing our community, um, and the desire and need to come here, um, and why people should want to come here, why they should want to live, work, and play here. I think that's part of it, and showcasing the opportunity we have, not only the jobs, but the quality of life. Number two, I think we need to do a better job, um, coordinating with our high schools and our colleges to really, um, talk about those opportunities that are here and what jobs are available. Um, I've been working with HR as well as economic, uh, development, talking about an internship program and how we want to work with these different industries and, and community leaders to say, hey, these are great jobs and they're right here in your community. Let's get them the experience necessary so that when they're graduating high school, if, if they, if college isn't for them, that's fine. They have a, a great career in a trade or something, or at a community college right here in your community. Or the same with, uh, with college graduates. I think that we need to showcase our community, show them and get them connected with the positions that they're looking to have. And once they build that relationship and, and see what the community has to offer, I'm confident that they'll want to stay here, too. So it's that coordination. Thanks. Yeah.
And our final panelist question, Ms. Hartnett, to Mr. Quinn.
What are your priorities if, if you're elected? What are some of the things that most important to you that you'd like to work on?
Well, like I said earlier, I'd like to work on the, uh, the finances and where we're spending our money. Uh, but I've already hit on that, so another thing would be the infrastructure. I think that, uh, we have terrible streets, we have terrible sidewalks, curbs need to be done, and I think we need to refocus some of our money over there and, and take our tax dollars and spend them on the people who live in this community. And, uh, that would be my priorities.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for serving as our panelists this evening. We appreciate your being here. And now, gentlemen, I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask some questions of each other. So we are going to start with Mr. Moore, I believe, because Mr. Jungers started our questioning round. So if you would direct your question, please, down here to Mr. Waples, and then we'll let Mr. Waples go, yeah, kind of zigzag about here. It'll work.
That makes sense. That sounds good to me. Mr. Waples, good evening.
Mr. Moore.
What, uh, what have you seen the city council do in the past four years that you thought was overall a really good thing for Sioux City?
Well, I think they brought in Seaboard Triumph. I mean, I think they've, they've done a great job with, with, uh, the apartments all going in downtown. We've had a lot of, with Ho-Chunk's done a lot downtown. Uh, I, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of stuff going on downtown. I, I think that's, uh, been very good.
Thank you.
Yay, thank you. And now, Mr. Waples, I'll let you ask the next question, and we'll direct that down to Mr. Greckin.
What's your thoughts on Perry Creek and, and why have we been still playing, paying flood insurance?
Doug, I would speculate, and I don't have the direct answer to that, but I would speculate that the reason, if, if, if the plan was to finish up through that 140 homes, that there isn't money available to do that, because otherwise the city would be taking full advantage of it and, and doing that. Federal funds have become increasingly harder to, uh, obtain. Uh, I, I believe at one point, uh, about the time we were talking about the Dearborn Avenue Bridge and Lincoln School was having the meetings out there, a lady took... School was having the meetings out there, a lady took me outside and showed me the creek and how it was starting to fill back in again. And I understood that we were going to move from Stone Park and Hamilton up to 36th Street and clean that out, and that money was available. And I shared that with her, talked with Mr. Ellis on a couple of occasions, and suddenly the money was gone. And there wasn't any money to do it. And I think that's what stops us, is the lack of finances.
Thank you. Mr. Gritkin, if you will direct your question to Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Quinn, one of my frustrations, and there haven't been very many, because it's really been a good experience on the city council, but one of the things I ponder all of the time is, how do we get, how does the city council, the city in general maybe, get the general public to engage the council more? Now, we've tried some things. Coffee with council is one of them. It seems to be diminishing the number of people who come. And so I'm always trying to figure out ways. Can you think of any way that the council should be encouraging, or any ideas to get the general public to engage the council more so there's more dialogue between us, and we know we're doing what they want?
I think if the people won't come to the council, maybe the council should go to the people. Maybe we should, the council should set up some town halls or something somewhere and meet in the neighborhoods with people at certain times to get the people that, in their own neighborhood, to come see them instead of asking the people to travel down here to see the council. That's, I would start there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And Mr. Quinn, if you will direct a question to Mr. Jungers, please.
You got my address, I can't. Anyway. I was talking to a couple of business owners downtown, and one of the things they mentioned about, when we were talking about how to make downtown a better place, one of them kind of mentioned something I'd never heard before, but he was talking about the homeless people downtown and, you know, the attraction of them. And I don't want to say anything bad about homeless people because, you know, God bless them, they need our help. But what would you do to possibly remove the homeless from downtown and to help them out?
I mean, with, if you have certain ordinances, I'd have to look at what the ordinances are. But with places like the Soup Kitchen and stuff like that, I think just the other day, they ran out of forks and they needed more forks. But with homeless people, you know, we need to treat them with respect. We need to treat them like they're one of us. But obviously, this time of year, with the warming shelter and stuff like that, we need to take care of them. You know, it's, we don't want to, you don't want to necessarily remove them, but obviously, we need to take care of them. So I'd find a place for them to have shelter, is what I would do.
Thank you. And Mr. Jungers, if you will direct a question to Mr. Waters.
Okay. Let's see.
Dun, dun, dun.
As I say, we're both young professionals. As I say, obviously, you're very active in things, and I'm getting more active in things. What is your, you talked about long-term vision. What is your long-term vision for Sioux City? I'd like to hear it.
All these questions, try to tackle in 60 seconds. Okay, Pete, I'm having your trouble tonight. My long-term vision is, I think that we need to really be seen as a powerhouse and really a force on this side of the state. I think that sometimes we think that we are at this incredible disadvantage by being in the tri-state region. And I think that we need to start seeing these things, not as to our detriment, but as an opportunity to coordinate efforts, to work better together, to really take advantage of that opportunity and see what we can do to really be the best region that we can be, want to do and where we want to go. I think one of the biggest things with that, with quality of life, is utilizing the riverfront and things like that. I think as long as we can start having that conversation of where we want to go and really having public input, that's going to be key for me.
And Mr. Waters, you get to ask the last question now to Mr. Moore.
All right. I've always been waiting for this. Now, Councilman Moore, I guess my question, something I struggle with, is I think infrastructure is like this buzzword, right? Like, everyone, everyone's quick to complain and say that they have a pothole or a curb or something. And I, trust me, I feel the same way about, especially Glen Avenue. You want to talk to me about that? But we know on council, as I've seen since serving here, that they're extraordinarily expensive. You know what I mean? It's just, it's very expensive to do some of those projects. What are your ideas of how we can better prioritize or find the funding to really make the people feel heard that we are trying to do all that we can to address those issues?
Sure. Good question, Mr. Waters. Thank you. Seriously, what I think, that comes in the budget process. Our budgeting that we do in January and February, we can address those issues. That's how we got West 7th Street to come into the project that it is today. There are many, many streets, and we acknowledge that, and curbs and sidewalks. We all are aware of that, and we have to continue to go through the budget process, come up with our list of priorities, and deal with them on a case-by-case basis. What we should not ever do is to give up because it's an uphill battle. I mean, our average life of our streets is, what, 70 years now? 80 years? Some streets aren't even paved, and we should never give up on getting the paving done, getting the streets repaired, and keep moving forward. It's going to be little by little, but I think we will continue to make progress. And we might have to look at our list of priorities if we go in each year. We should look at the list of priorities. Thanks.
Thank you. This concludes the first half of our forum. Please join me in thanking our panelists for serving this evening. We will be taking a short break. Let's try and be back here in 10 minutes so that we can continue afterwards with your questions. If you have questions, please hand them on the cards to one of the League of Women voter members or to one of the mayor's youth commissioner members, and I will pose as many of them as I can after our break. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you? I'm surprised you haven't drank that whole pitcher, buddy.
I'm tempted. See, I didn't know.
... the way to deal with a medical issue for a family member, and he asked me to express his apologies to you for not being able to be here for the rest of this forum, but he did need to take care of this, and we appreciate him taking the time to come earlier this evening. Gentlemen, I will give you each 60 seconds to answer these questions. We will go through as many of them as we can. I have been given many to choose from, so I'm going to start off with a softball for y'all.
Oh, boy.
And we want you all to answer this. So we would like you all to rank your parking skills. From one to three, you have a choice of parallel parking, back-end diagonal parking, or front-end diagonal parking. And Mr. Gritkin, we'll let you go first on that one.
Do I rank all three?
Yeah, just say which ones are you best at. One, two, three.
Parallel parking I'm really good at. Diagonal parking I could probably be pretty good at, but I've already confessed to the backup. I've only had a few accidents, but they've always been backing up. And I don't know what it is, but it's a challenge for me sometimes to turn behind my back. And that's why I emphasize using mirrors.
Thank you. Mr. Jungers.
I work at a car dealership, so I'm pretty good at parking. But I would say diagonal first.
Girlfriend would attest that I am a great driver now, and so I think that I can pretty much tackle all of those maneuvers. I would confess, I have not done the reverse angle, but I do see the great benefit of having them, increasing spaces. And hey, it's one less step than parallel parking. I understand people are afraid of change, but hey, I tell you what, I'll have to try it in the near future, and I hope everyone else does, too.
Okay, thank you.
No doubt.
And Mr. Waples.
I would do the drive-in first, parallel second, and the back end would be a low third.
Okay, thank you. All right, to then proceed to Mr. Waters for this next one.
Oh, boy.
A lot of graduates of high school aren't planning to come back to Sioux City for their future. What would you say are some reasons for young adults to come back to the city they grew up in?
That's something that I've talked to actual city staff about. If we can start polling our graduates, whether it's high school or college, you know, what is bringing them to these other communities, so we can start addressing some of those things. What I would talk about of why to come back here is, I think we've spoke about some of them. Number one, I think we have a low cost of living compared to other cities in the region. I think that we have a lot of opportunity and new development, things that are coming down the pipeline. For me, I would love to maybe even sell my house or rent my house and have one of the new apartments downtown. I love downtown living. I think the connection of our trails, the new interstate and Highway 20, I think that we're on the cusp of a lot of great quality-of-life amenities, our parks and everything like that. And so I would encourage them to give us another chance, come back and see what's changing, and really be a part of that momentum. So that's what I would tell them.
Mr. Waples. What will you do to get the endorsements from the local unions, and will you stick to the answers that you provided on their questionnaires?
I guess I don't think I've answered any union questions.
Ooh.
That I know of. So I guess I can't answer that. I haven't talked to any of the local unions. I haven't... local unions. I haven't...
What would you like to say to them?
You know, I support the unions and I think it's beneficial for the employees. The council has stood behind them in the last year, and I think that was very important. They did privatize the Tyson, but I think that was maybe a different situation. And I know it was a hard decision for everybody to make, and I think it's maybe worth giving a year try and see what happens and see if it works. I guess I don't have an answer if it's going to work or not. I don't think anybody does.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gretkin, how would you encourage citizens to volunteer to serve on commissions, especially women and minorities?
I would communicate with them, talk to them about the number of committees and commissions and boards the city has, which I think is dangerously close to 40. And there's a variety of opportunities. In fact, there's a handful of openings right now. I think, again, I think it all comes back to being a good communicator and being a good listener and understanding where their interests lie and then maybe marrying them up to something that would be enjoyable for them. I think once people get involved, and this would be my observation, I think once people get involved in city government, there's not near the mystery there that some may think. And they can find, they will find out for sure, without a doubt. There are a lot of really good people here who are enthusiastic about what they do and will share that enthusiasm and will listen to what people have to say because we're all here for the same thing. We want to make the community the best that we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jungers, would you consider hosting training on how to run for office with a special focus on women, minorities, and younger citizens? And how would you carry this out?
If I would personally or as a city?
As a city.
As a city, absolutely. If we don't include everybody, then how can we say we're doing our jobs? I would say basically, it goes back to when Mr. Quinn was here. We need to get, we need to go to them. If we know somebody that's interested in something and they're a minority and they're not involved right now, but they want to be, ask them if they have friends. Ask them if their family wants to be involved. If we're inviting, you know, we're open for business, but ask them that we're open for everybody to be involved.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, the property the convention center presently is on has had soil problems with the floors and/or foundations. Should the hotel and parking structure be reconsidered or relocated? Parking meters, I think downtown would thrive again.
Good points. And let me say this about soils, especially in Sioux City. Before you build, you have the soil testing done. That's critical to any construction. So, I'm certain that that's in process, the footings and that kind of thing. So, I'm sure that that's being done. With parking meters, and that's been a discussion over the years, Downtown Partners has looked at that from time to time. And one thing that I think we all agree on is we need a consistency to what our parking is, especially in the downtown area. Is there free parking? Is there metered parking? How long are the meters enforced and that kind of thing? I think the consistency would help everyone and then tie it in with the parking ramps as well. It's something that I think we have to review every year. It's not something we can decide one year and say there, we've got it fixed because it isn't.
Thank you. Mr. Waters, what can we do to attract more white collar jobs?
Well, I mean, I think that ultimately, we need the workforce. That's where we're really struggling. At least, that's what I'm seeing. When I talk to, because I try to talk to the Chamber of Commerce, the Siouxland Initiative, talk to people and those businesses of what's it going to take to get them to relocate. And you can talk about the A1 office space, the different opportunities that there is as far as space, whether that's downtown or otherwise. You can talk about tax structure. Ultimately, for me, it comes down to the workforce. We need more young professionals, more young people that can fill those jobs, staying right here. And that's one thing, the colleges right now are working on a little bit. I've been starting to coordinate a regional effort, looking at how can we fill a need? If we see a need and maybe have them graduating with a certain degree or certain training, what type of positions can come here? How can we attract those businesses? And I think ultimately, it comes with attracting the workforce. They need to be able to fill those jobs if they're going to come here.
Thank you. I don't know, I kind of like this one for all of you, so I'm going to pose it to all of you because I'm in charge.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Waples, we'll start with you. Who has been your role model in an elected position at the local government level and why?
I suppose Lauren Callender. I used to wait on him when he brought his vehicle in to be serviced. He was always very friendly, always dressed in a suit when he'd come in usually. And I think he did a lot of good for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Gretkin?
I would say, role model might be not the right term that I would use, but I can remember the very first time that I heard a politician, I'll call him a politician, he was a politician, but I'm more in tune to public servant as opposed to politician. But the first time I heard, I was on the police department, it was at the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors meeting, and Earl Gruskin was a board member. And Earl, there was a discussion about funding for drug enforcement and the lack of federal funding available. And Earl made it very clear that we need to have a vested interest...
Two answers on this. First, not here in Sioux City, but over, see how things are going. And he'll always ask you for your opinion, no matter if you agree with him or not. And I really respect him.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
This takes me back close to 40 years ago when I came to Sioux City to practice law. And at that time, I was a member of the First Presbyterian Church and Bill Skinner was our pastor. And Bill Skinner ran for Mr. Skinner. I was one person that got me interested in the planning zoning commissions, that I thought I would enjoy it. And he was a good role model from the standpoint of honesty, integrity, and listening to the citizens. And I like to think that I've taken many of his skills and have used them while I'm on the city council. And I think it's paid off. I think, I think all of you, I think the taxpayers, the citizens want to know that we are going to listen to you. We might not always agree, but we have to hear each other out and we have to have conversation. Thanks.
Mr. Waters?
Well, at the risk of him getting a big head, I too am going to mention Chris Hall. I've gotten to know Chris over the years. We've really become kind of close friends and I've learned a lot from him. And I guess what I learned the most from him is his willingness to be a listener, to really get out there and talk to the people. That's something that I've tried to champion, right? Like, I try to go to as many public events and talk to as many people as possible because I believe in the ideas that we all have and that we all bring to the table. And I think as an elected official, you need to be willing to listen and hear other perspectives. And what I appreciate about Chris is not only his willingness to listen, but also work across the aisle, work with people on varying issues, whether you agree on everything or not. You can find, you can find things that you respect in one another and try to really represent the people that you are elected, represent them well. And I really respect that about him. But finally, I would just say that he stands up for what he thinks is right. And I think sometimes, as elected officials, that's really challenging. And I respect that about Chris.
Thank you. Okay, back to you, Mr. Waples. What are your views on the substantial late fines on city contracts that are not finished on time?
There you go. That's for you, buddy. Right for you. Team it up.
I think the fines should be higher. The other thing, I think, is if you give somebody 120 days to get something done, and there's, say, as a reference, I'll use nine days when the sun was shining and the project was started, not a wheel was turned, they should also be fined for those days because there's no excuse. The only reason they weren't there is they had other jobs going on. You know, you can't give the same contractor that does the same kind of work three jobs to be done at the same time. Because I can attest that it doesn't happen.
Thank you. Okay, I don't even understand this question, Mr. Gretkin, but I'm sure you do. Does the city use historical or zero-based budgeting and why?
Well, I think, early on in my career, and I had the opportunity, my last 20-plus years as a captain in the police department, I became directly involved in budgets. It used to be a zero-based budget, but I believe now that I would refer to it more as historical, that it's based on history. We take a strong look at how we spent the money last year and what five-year history, or a minimum of three years prior to that time, how much money we spent. And that kind of starts, that's the focus point for where we move forward from there. Are we doing, will we, do we have plans to do that again in the future? Do we want to increase it? Do we want to cut back? But most of what the city has done has been based on a historical point of view. And often, it gives you the opportunity to be really close to the history when you're preparing a budget.
Thank you. Mr. Jungers, in your interview with the Sioux City Journal, you said that the current council all seem like good friends. More explanation about this broad claim?
I don't think you need four to one or five and oh votes all the time, is what that comes down to. You know, at the last forum, Mr. Gretkin mentioned that, you know, he wanted the city council to seem with unity and together, which is fine. But if you have your, and you have just five and oh or four and one decisions, did the discussion happen? Did you postpone the discussion? You know, when you know, when you talk with each other and you know three other people are most likely going to vote one way and you're going to vote another way, what's the difference? I mean, vote for your heart, vote for what your mind is thinking and what people are telling you. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, should there be term limits? I'm assuming that means for the city council.
That's a good question. I think, I think historically, you know, that's a tough question for this reason. Historically, city council, some of the longest-serving members of the council have served the city well. It isn't like we need to get this person off the council. And the voters have the right at every election to decide if an incumbent should be taken off the council. So, historically, I think we have a pretty good record. I don't think there's been a problem with long-serving members of the council. And I can think of two or three that served the city very well. So, I think I'd really want to think about that a little bit deeper than just saying, yes, there should be term limits, or no, there shouldn't be. There hasn't been a problem. And the many council members will serve one term, maybe two terms, and then they're done. They've completed their service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Concerning illegal immigration, what should the city do when cooperating with federal authorities?
Well, I guess what I would say is you follow the letter of the law. You know what I mean? I think that your hands are kind of tied, honestly. I think that as a community in regards to illegal immigration, I think you need to follow the law. We need to do what is right. As far as legal immigrants that are here, I think we need to be more inclusive. We need to look for opportunities to embrace them and what they bring. I think diversity is a good thing. And so I think we need to champion those efforts and really work to make sure that they're a part of our community. But yeah, when it comes to illegal immigration, I think that coordinating with federal and state regulations, I think that that's important. You got to follow the law.
Thank you. What support should the city give to nonprofit organizations?
I think that needs to be handled on a one-on-one basis. I mean, I think you need to look at what they've done for the city in the last few years, or if it's a new nonprofit asking for money. I think you need to, it's going to be hard to come up with a figure without knowing their track record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gretkin, how might you, as a council member, best communicate to the public the varied volunteer accomplishment of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission?
I would just give the facts. First of all, there's, I don't know if the numbers add it up. I should call on Linda, maybe she's gone. But I don't, how many members? I think you were in the area of 185 this year, or maybe it's a little less, a little more, but it's not that far off. But they do a marvelous job of getting involved in the community. I'll say, and these numbers are off the top of my head, but they're pretty close, I suspect. 4,500 to 5,000 hours of community service. They've come to the council and made recommendation for ordinance changes. They meet on a monthly basis. They have a structure very similar to the city council. They're active, they're involved, and their community perspective is, they learn now that it's really important, and they're getting close to adulthood, and I know she's going to cut me off on this one, but this is where they develop. This is where they develop, and they will have a vested interest in whatever community they end up. We hope it's here. And it's really, they're just fabulous.
You let him go on on purpose.
Mr. Moore, we're back to the sinkhole. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Jungers. I skipped you. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to do that. I was looking at the sinkhole question and it's directed specifically at Mr. Moore. Mr. Jungers, this one was directed specifically to you. You published a news release stating that crime wrecks havoc in Sioux City. However, the statistics show crime has greatly declined in recent years, including this year to date. Where are you getting your information to support this claim?
I'd like to see that study. I would say, I'm going off of what I've seen, you know, and you could say that maybe social media, you know, you're just seeing it more. Well, that's not true. It's not just social media. Social media's been around for a long time now. But if you ask anybody on the street, you know, if there's a study out there that says the statistics have gone down, that's great. But at the same time, if you ask the general feeling of the people, they're going to say they've heard a lot more about stabbings, a lot more about shootings and stuff like that. You know, and one of those things you need to get back to, you need to support the police department. If you're not supporting the police department, you know, but I know for a fact, I'm a part of the Neighborhood Network. They go to plenty of events, you know, and, you know, maybe if we can increase the funding for them to go to those events, it's great. But I think the current city council does a great job of supporting the police department, but we need to support them. But as for that study, I haven't seen it.
Okay, thank you. All right, now to the sinkhole.
Now.
You've had plenty of time to think about this. The sinkhole at 30th and Pierce was brought to the city's attention seven years ago. It has caused at least one, the homeowner to move out over four years ago. Why was the problem ignored since it was obviously the city's responsibility to fix it? And the taxpayers need to know the total tax dollars amount that it is going to cost us. So...
Well, why it happened and why it went on for so long, I don't have a good answer for that. I know sinkholes can be a problem just tracing what the cause of the sinkhole is and how to make the repairs. I just, I'm not sure what happened several years ago and why it wasn't addressed. I know we need to be more immediate with those kind of problems that we're having in our streets, and we need to take, we need to take immediate action. that we're having in our streets, and we need to take, we need to take immediate action. We also need to apologize to the property owners for having to go through something like what has recently happened. There had been another home that had some damage to it, and they called me at my home one night, and we got right on it to make sure that the correction was made, that the house was cleaned, and, and we acted immediately. So that's something that we can never let happen again.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Yes?
If you were a member of a union representing city employees, would you vote to stay in the union when the, when a recertification vote would be held? Please explain your answer.
Would I vote to stay, union?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I really think the city council took some heat over the privatization of the Tyson Event Center, but overwhelmingly, I've been impressed with our, our coordination, or at least my, my ability or my desire to work with the local unions. I've been in contact with them over a lot of different decisions. And I think that you look at the collective bargaining and what they did at the state level and what the action of the city council was, and I hope that they would understand. But if that decision was up to me, I understand and I appreciate the, the value of the union workforce and what they've done for really middle-class and, and elsewhere, everyone. I mean, and so I really appreciate that. And, and yeah, I would hope that I would definitely recertify and be that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to ask one last question to each of you four gentlemen, and then we'll allow you to make your closing statements. So for you, Mr. Waiples, how as a council member, could you encourage students to apply and to become members of the Mayor's Youth-
Well, I think you need to start out by personally inviting, inviting them to a council meeting. I think that's one of the main things. I think they need to get here and, and see what's done and, and hopefully pique their interest that way. Or prior to a year or so of them joining, have the, the kids and people that are on the commission now be talking to the younger students about joining.
Thank you. Mr. Greckin, there are several empty buildings in the downtown areas, as examples, and the Promenade complex, the MLK, and in the MLK Transportation Center. When considering development ventures guaranteed by the city, what due diligence should the city carry out before committing to the project?
Well, I think it's important that the city do all that they can do to provide assistance to get those buildings functional. It's really up to the developer, to, property owner, to take the initiative to, to do something with the property. The Promenade is maybe an exception to the rule there, that there's litigation that is ongoing that can't be discussed publicly. But, but I think you'll see that, that will all come together sometime in the near future. I, I think it may come down to economic development, doing all that they can do to encourage and look for those businesses that might need those facilities. I think the city's due diligence part is to make sure that you're dealing with good people and good projects.
Thank you. Mr. Jungers, there have been several unity in the community meetings with the, that have been held with the police department actively involved. Have you had an opportunity to attend any of these meetings? And if so, what was your impression? And how would you like to move forward with this initiative?
With the unity in the community, unfortunately, I haven't been able to attend one so far. But I would look to do it. Last event that I went to was, I believe it was about police safety, and it was held at the Public Museum. And to get people more involved and to bring people to those events, once again, I think it just goes back to inviting people and being a part of it. You know, with, with a working schedule, it's, it's a little tough to make it to meetings. And some days you stay long, and some days you, you might possibly get off early. But it's just one of those things, we, you need to be more involved in that.
Thank you. Okay, last question. We've talked about this a little bit before, but Mr. Moore, would you be in favor of having the city council forums in different places throughout the city in order to get input from different citizens?
I think that our, I'd say, our coffee with council evolved because I wanted to, I like the idea of doing whatever Iowa Supreme Court does, and that's going to actually out to different communities. And having a council meeting, they have Supreme Court, have a council meeting, hold those council meetings. It became abundantly clear to me that with staff and with being televised and making sure people at home can see what we're doing and hear what we're doing, these, the council chambers were the best to have council meetings. So therefore, we did the coffee with council concept. I think, and, and some of the attendance has dwindled a little bit. I like to think that maybe people are pleased with the way the city's going. I know that's optimistic on my part, but nevertheless, it's there. I think maybe we want to look at maybe a different format, a different forum. But I'm, I'm absolutely all in favor of, of reaching out to the citizens and, and meeting them in their neighborhoods and, and having meetings with them in that manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, time for closing statements, gentlemen. You will each have 60 seconds to summarize. And Mr. Waiples, we will be starting with you.
I think a lot of my concerns are pretty clear. I think we need to work on getting projects done on time. I think we need to make sure if we're doing a project in front of a business, we try not to, the people can get in and out, and there's parking as close as possible when they're working on streets. I think we need to at least have some sort of a five-year plan on when we're going to get Perry Creek done up on the, the north side. I, I guess that's a couple of my main issues. I think if, if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, I'll gladly serve for four years, but I probably would not serve any longer than that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greckin?
I believe I'm qualified to be a council member because I am first and foremost honest. I am dependable. I have experienced probably 40-plus years of, not probably, I am over, probably closer to 42 years, city government experience. But maybe more than anything else, I don't like, it's not that I don't like the word politician, I almost said that, I didn't mean that. I, I'm, I really am a public servant. That's been my whole life. I have passion for the city. I believe in the city. They're a great organization. They have great people. I have the time. Maybe it's my way of giving back for all of the years of service I had, but, but it's something I enjoy. It's given me an opportunity as I grow a little older to be around a lot of good people. And I'm committed, got a good work ethic, and will do my very best to continue to serve the city in the best way I can. Thank you.
Mr. Jungers?
I want to be, I want to be more involved. I want to bring new people into the decision-making process. I want to attract my generation. My, I have friends that have moved to other places. I want to get them back. You know, you can't, you can't just go somewhere else because it's easier. You, you have to fight for making Sioux City, to make Sioux City great. It's, it's one of those things that it's, it's really going to, I think it's really going to be a passion of mine to fight for the city. You know, but if we can get more people involved, that's what I want to do. And just, just go from there, really. But I would ask for your vote. Just because I am the youngest up here doesn't mean I'm not ready. It doesn't mean I wouldn't listen. I would also remind other people that they once started somewhere too. So to get that experience, that's why I'm starting right now.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this forum tonight. Really appreciate it. I will continue to work hard on your behalf. You have my word on that. I work very hard for what the city of Sioux City needs and what all of you talk about. I'm proud to serve the citizens of Sioux City. I want to let you know that I think we have a great deal of civility on the city council. We have professionalism, and we have a high degree of ethics. I think we're very transparent, we're very open, and I want to continue that. I have a proven record. I have experience, and I'll put that to work for you. I have a common sense approach to issues that come up from time to time. And as many of you know, I, I'm not afraid to confront an issue and to deal with it in the open. And I would want to continue that as well. I would hope that communication could continue between us, because I think it's extremely important that the citizens are served well and that they're served with the greatest ability that, that I would have to offer. Thank you.
And Mr. Waters?
All right. Well, I would say the last eight months, or how, whatever it's been, have been the most incredibly demanding and difficult eight months of my life. And I think that it's a really challenging job to serve on city council. And, and the reason that it's challenging is because I'm giving it everything I can. I RPM on a Monday job for me. It's about going to the community events and talking with people and getting their perspective and listening to them, and seeing what they believe we should be working on and where we can go as a community. That's the dedication that you want of people that are serving you on city council. That's what I've brought to the table. That's what I've done before I serve, and it's what I hope I can continue to do. I think in addition to that, you want to not just look to youth or experience energetic about the future of this community. Who is going to bring an enthusiasm that's going to inspire people to want to stay here, want to come back here? That's what we need. We need that energy. We need those people that are going to champion those ideas and get everyone behind it so that we can be the best community that we can be now and into the future.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City, the Greater Sioux City Press Club, and SULAN Public Media, I want to thank our audience for attending tonight's forum. We appreciate the Mayor's Youth Commission members for being our greeters and timers this evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
No doubt.
Great job.
Great job.
We also wish to thank the city for working with us to arrange for cable television coverage of this event. And above all, we wish to thank our candidates for their cooperation and commitment to public service. Please give them a round of applause.
And please, a round of applause for Corey Cantrell, our moderator. We really appreciate her as well.
I would like to remind you that the Sioux City Council election will take place on Tuesday, November 7. You may vote at any of the voting centers in Sioux City. There are flyers outside with the locations. If, if you are not registered to vote already, you have the opportunity for same-day voter registration at the polling site. You must show proper Iowa identification with a photo and current address. You may register and then vote at the voting center on the same day. If you wish to register to vote, the deadline is tomorrow. So you can pick up the voter registration cards here at the League of Women Voters table. Or if you are watching online, you may go to the Woodbury County Courthouse to pick those up. But they do need to be in tomorrow. If you wish to learn more about the League of Women Voters membership, we're not for women only, and our focus is nonpartisan and voter member education on issues of facing our nation, state, and city. Please stop by the table and pick up some information forms there. That's how I got here. And thank you again for participating this evening. We remember your vote is a precious gift. Use it wisely. Thank you.
Great job, Doug. Good to see you, man.